I'd like to call Thursday, May 9, 2019. Public work session to order. And if this time, if you would please stand for a moment of silence and then remain standing for the flight of allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The mission of Porcham Public Schools Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. This time, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson, Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Ms. Schumake.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Pan.
Here.
What name is that, Ms. Seven, and Ms. President?
Thank you. The next item is the approval of the agenda for tonight. You've had an opportunity to read the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
Move for approval, second.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you. The next item is a closed session. I move that the Board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2-23711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. Number one, consideration of student disciplinary matters as presented under subsection A2. And number two, consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment, performance, and resignation of specific school employees as presented under section A1. Did he get a motion?
Second.
I move.
I move.
And there's a second?
Second.
All right. Moving to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion.
So the motion is stopped.
She made her first here.
Thank you.
Second.
While I read, I move.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
We're now in closed session. All right, we're now ready to go with 3.1. 3.1 is roll call vote, consideration of expulsion discipline case 2018-19/17. The recommendation is new direction until the end of the year.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
One second. No.
3.1.
On 3.1. Yes, new direction. We've been over this.
Come on, yes. Yours, no. No. Mr. Barnes.
No.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Ms. Schumake.
No.
Ms. Williams.
No.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Three yes. Five no's.
So then it reverts to the superintendent. The original motion, which is expulsion. Correct? Mr. Turner. Motion failed.
The motion fails. So if there is...
It didn't fail. It didn't no's.
How was the motion presented? I'm sorry.
That's why he said five no's.
New direction until the end of the year. The motion failed.
And not fail. Okay, so now you have the recommendation still before the Board for expulsion because the Board recommendation of new direction failed. So you still have the recommendation from the superintendent for expulsion. Is there another motion? Is there another motion before the Board in regard to the expulsion motion? Or some other motion?
So there's no other motion before the Board?
I'd like to make a motion for time served.
Second.
Need a second? All right. There's a motion on the floor that discipline case 2018-19/17 is time served.
To be returned to school.
Now.
Now, but noticing that his record will reflect that he was suspended for misconduct for the time served.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
No.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
No.
No?
No.
Five yes votes. Oh, three no's, I'm sorry. Get passes.
I'll do a three no's.
So, time served.
Time served. Return to school.
Returns to school. Next item is 3.2, consideration of expulsion discipline case 2018-19/18. This is administration, administrative placement.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you. Item 3.3, consideration of expulsion discipline case 2018-19/19 is the recommendation is expulsion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen. Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Next item on the agenda is consideration of expulsion discipline case number 2018-19/20. The recommendation is new direction until the end of the school year.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of expulsion discipline case 2018-19-21. The recommendation is administration, administrative placement.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Ms. Schumake.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes.
Is unanimous?
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is grant fund, funds update. Dr. Bracy. Yes, Mr. Paul. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, School Board members. I'm here tonight to give you an update to the grant fund budget revision presentation I gave at the April 11 meeting. Right now, we're currently finalizing a compilation and review of that information requested by the city to support our calculations for those grant budget fund revisions. Just to give you a little perspective, we have about 70 grant programs that we have in the schools. We compiled grant award letters for most of those programs over a two-year period as requested by the city. This is my love the binder right here with all those letters. And so we're reviewing this to make sure that we have all of the information that they've asked for. We have multiple allocation changes with some of those grants, like Title I, special ed, some of the other grants. So we have to pull each of those letters to ensure that we're complete and accurate. So with that, our next steps are, we're going to provide this information to the city at some point next week, once all of our review is done. They will then review it, and then at that point, we'll forward a resolution to the School Board for approval once those reviews have been finalized. And then lastly, we have to rescind the original ordinance that we sent back in February.
Right.
So then we can replace it with the ordinance that you guys will hopefully approve as we go through and we bring it back to you. And I think Dr. Bracy might have had something else on that process.
Yeah, I spoke with Dr. Patton this afternoon in regards to that. So we'll just send, we'll send a letter, as we did, asking for it, to rescind it, and that we will have another one coming up shortly.
So that will be on the May 23 agenda? So they can vote on any view?
You're talking about the city?
City Council.
Yes. We will try to get it there. We have to work with the city and make sure that they're comfortable with everything that we've given them before we bring it back to you, to make sure that it is accurate at that time.
Now, I guess my heartburn has been, because this has been since February, that it seems like the city wants certain information, we have certain information, and I have not figured out why in the world can't we get together and say, all right, here's what we have. Is this satisfactory to you? I mean, does this satisfy the requirements? And then if it doesn't, then show me or let me know, what do I have to do to make, to be in compliance with what you want? So you and I guess is the Mrs. Washington or Dr. Patton or whoever it is, it seems that we got to get this together because this is going, been going on for two months. He gets a letter, and I get a letter as the chairman of the school board from the city attorney. Well, I have to sign all legal documents, and I need this to be, we need this to be resolved, and I hope it can be resolved for the Board to vote on it May 23.
And that's what we're moving in the direction to do. And I have to say, unfortunately, I wish I could say it was an easy task. It's very difficult.
Well, I know you have...
What they've asked us to give them is two years of grant information on many of the grants that we have, many of those 70. So again, in my stead, I want to make sure it's accurate and true.
But when we had the audit, in other words, we did not overspend.
No, sir.
Like we were accused, that we overspent.
No, sir.
So we did not overspend because we had money to...
Yes, we had carryover.
Carryover funds.
Right. No, it was not an overspend. There were carryover funds that were not appropriated, but the money was included in the grant allocations that we had, carrying over from year to year for those grants that are longer than 12 months.
Yes. Ms. Hines.
Can I, I just need to ask this question for clarity. When we receive grants, do we get a check for $75,000? Do we get a check for 1.5? It's all on a reimbursement?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not like we've got money sitting in an account that, it's just sitting here and we're not spending it.
Right.
And the reason that the grants are for two to three years is for that reimbursement and for that plan, because these grants go with a plan, with an education plan, with a, there's a plan and there's pieces that are attached to it. It's not just receiving of money.
Yes, ma'am.
So our grants are reimbursable grants. They are not, here's a check, go spend it as you want kind of grant. That's, that's not what we do in education anymore.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding our grant process correctly.
And that's it.
Well, I'm saying ours because I just care about mine right now, and I don't want to be accused of having done something wrong.
And you've got carryover for several of the grants, which you carry over to the next year, and then some grants are just a one-year grant. In other words, we send it, in other words, we pay, we send the reimbursement, the state reimburses us.
Yes, sir. That is correct. And the majority of our grants are multi-year grants.
Absolutely. So, all right, let's get this baby up.
Mr. Pan, can I add one more thing to that discussion? I think once the, and I'm going to call it the inner sanctum of budget discussions, sit and get on the same page, I think it might be, it might be good for us to have a joint meeting with council and us, to sit and to go over these expectations so that we are all speaking off the same page. And whether that is at a summer retreat or whether that's at a joint meeting, whenever we get there, but I just, to belabor this process year over year is rather tiring.
Right.
Okay. I just think a joint meeting...
Here's the process. Here's what we want you to do. We follow the process and we do it.
Correct.
I agree.
Correct.
All right, the next item. Oh, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
Instead of having a joint retreat, couldn't we get that in writing?
We need, it needs to be.
I mean, put it in writing because when we go to these retreats, we leave like, you know, we're just one happy family.
Everything's wonderful.
Until the next budget season, and then it just dissolves.
It's never, the retreats are never focused.
Right. The retreat, the last retreat, we could not issue the word money or finance. So maybe if the liaisons, the finance people want to resolve it.
Right.
Can you put it in writing in a memo?
Right.
Of what the expectations are.
At minimum.
But it has to be within the school board's policy, not something that they make up.
No.
Right.
Exactly. Here is, here is the process.
Here's the process.
And we're going to follow it. That's what I just, you know, we're going on three months. This should not have taken three months. I mean, they should have said to Mr. Falk, this is what I, this is what I want, and then, but he keeps giving them.
Right. Well, and the hard part is, is we all know where Mr. Falk sits because usually we are the ones doing the arguing and the discussions in public. So I appreciate, I don't wish it on anybody because we, we're elected to do that. At the same time, I'm glad the process is happening so that we can all be singing off the same sheet of music or, you know, reading off the same documents as far as, you know, financial and budget processes are concerned. So I don't wish it on anybody. Thank you for doing that, but we know where you are because we've done it too many years. Okay.
Mr. Falk, has anyone from the State Department in the, whatever, whether it's Title I, Title II, any of the grants, you always have a supervisor at the State Department that works with school divisions. Has anybody from the State Department in any one of these grants, mostly your grants, have they contacted and you say, Mr. Falk, what's going on? We haven't got a reimbursement, or there seems to be a problem? Can we help you? Have we gotten any contact with the State Department?
Not to my knowledge. For the time I've been here, no, sir.
Okay.
Yes, the title grants that you made.
Yeah.
So they give us a spin-down plan.
Yeah.
And we have grants, as you know, that carry over from one year to the next.
Sure.
We are completely in line with all of our grants.
Right.
And the funds are already, we're on spin-down for those that are expiring, for instance, in September 30 of this year.
That's right. Right.
And there's a plan for each year. Those grants are very specific, and we have to, we have audits where we have to answer to state.
Exactly.
And give them evidence, not just say, but give them evidence and artifacts to demonstrate what we've done with that money.
We certainly don't want to be in a situation about three or four years ago where the neighboring school division did not do that, and they, all that money had to be returned. That would not be, that would not be...
You don't, you say it has to be returned.
Right. Okay. All right, great. Thank you. I'm sorry, you know, you're a new guy on the block, and I appreciate all the work you have done since you've been here. I know you've got thrown into the fire, but you have done a great job. We appreciate you. All right, next item is 2019 budget update. Dr. Bracy. Right. Or Mr. Falk.
All right, everybody. This is budget update, where we are at this point. If you recall, when we, when you approved the proposed FY 2019-20 school board budget, we requested additional funding from the city of about $3.1 million, to be exact, $3,123,573 to balance the operating budget. On April 23, the city council verbally in their meeting supported increasing the local appropriation to Porcham Public Schools by 2.6 million to provide the 3% raise to all employees. So with that, that, if that increase is approved by the city on May 14, we would need to reduce our expenditure budget by $523,573 to balance our budget. So how would we do that? Well, we looked at our budget and found some areas that we thought we could make some reductions in that would help us to balance. First, we reduced substitute teacher expenditures by $157,344. As we looked at actuals for this year, we felt like we could make that reduction and still be within our budget guidelines for next year. Newer replacement equipment, we reduced it by $258,000. And then furniture replacements across the division, 108 to 29, which brings us to our grand total of 523,573.
Would you elaborate on the new and replacement of equipment? What?
That is mainly some equipment that we had in the budget as relations to some renovations in our libraries. There was a plan that we wanted over a multi-year period to make renovations to our libraries. And so we looked at it and said, that might be a project that may be more suitable over time for a CIP project. So that's why that was a reduction that we did, because it's going to affect all the schools if the plan is done in the way that it was presented to us.
But it has nothing to do with computers or any of the technology?
No, sir.
Or anything we need for STEM or anything like that?
No, sir.
All right, okay. Thank you. All right. Okay.
And with that, our next steps, if again, that 2.6 million increase is approved by the city council on May 14, we will present this budget with these reductions to you on May 23, and the budget will be balanced at that point.
Awesome.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Mr. Lamb.
Yes. Under the reductions of substitute teacher expenditure?
Uh huh.
What exactly is that?
Well, those are the costs that we spend over the year for any substitute teachers that we have in the division. So that line covers all your substitutes that would be hired and worked in the school division for the year.
So we're saying that we're looking at cutting back on substitutes?
No. We're saying we're cutting the budget in that line. If you recall, from this year's budget, we don't have as much in the substitute line for this year because of the, some of the cuts that we made last year, we're using attrition savings to cover it. What I did in this budget is restored that line.
Mm-hmm.
So we would have a line that had substitute expenditures in it, just in case we had any overages on and so forth. As we looked at our actuals for this year, as time went on from February, when we first proposed this budget, it looks that we can reduce that line. And if anything goes over, we may be able to use some attrition savings to cover those amounts.
So your year-to-date, in other words, you looked at the year-to-date?
Yes, sir.
At this point, and we have enough money to cover the year?
For next year.
And reducing it $158,000 would not jeopardize if something happened to, that increased that substitute line item?
Right.
We would have other revenue that we could, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else want to come in? Dr. Bracy, you all right?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. All right. The next item is, oh boy, consideration of certain school board policies.
Move for approval.
Second.
Wait.
There was a lot of them. Did you all go?
Yes, there was a lot of them.
Yeah, wait a minute, I got to get to it. Motion's been made, and second, and in discussion, and I do have a discussion.
Discussion.
Wait a minute, I got to find it. Oh, it's, it's the one dealing with the three-member disciplinary...
Oh, yeah, that was mine.
Yeah, that was my discussion, too.
Oh, wait a minute, there it is.
We didn't talk about that. Yeah, we didn't.
BCEA. It says, "A disciplinary committee composed of at least three school board members presides over all cases of student suspensions of more than 10 days and expulsion within the Porcham School Division. The decision of the committee, if unanimous, is the final decision of the Board." And then it goes down, "If the committee's decision is not unanimous, the people or people's parents may appeal the decision to the school board. Such appeals should be decided by the school board within 30 days." I don't remember us having this discussion. Maybe we did.
We didn't have this discussion. We did discuss this on our, in our policy meeting. We discussed, we discussed the doing it in here, but we didn't have a meeting in, where this policy was...
And I didn't want this all reason.
So cool.
Oh, sure. This policy is optional. Before you all did not approve it, but it came back up again in this set of policies. So it's optional whether you want it or not. But normally, the policy would come to the policy committee for us to have a discussion before we...[1493.66] before.
It was in there.
No, I remember this one in there.
I read all of them.
And I read, I read all of them.
Because I was up 2:00 in the morning reading.
I had my book in the car, I don't remember.
I just didn't want us to approve something that.
No, we need to delete that one, we didn't discuss that.
I agree.
I think we need to address it.
Right.
But, because we keep, yeah, but not, not with this one. I don't remember this one.
Because if we would have, if we'd have approved all the policies?
That would have been it.
That would have been in it.
Yeah, that was my question.
And we, I knew that we did not, I mean, we've discussed this, but we have never said this was going to be policy.
Well, it still says optional, I'm sorry.
It is optional.
It still says optional, so that gives us the flexibility to put in, in times where we need a disciplinary committee, not that we have to follow it all the time.
No, but to even vote on it at this point?
That's not what that says.
The, the policy committee had not, we had not discussed this particular policy.
Well.
I don't remember discussing this policy.
They have to go before the policy committee, before they come before the board, and we didn't.
That's not what this policy reads, Ms. Hines. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, this board's been talking about a disciplinary committee for a year.
Yes.
And so, at some point, we need something so that we can get it, get it moving if that is the will of the board. And with some of the time out of school that we have seen tonight, and some of our other, and some of the cases that came before us tonight, this disciplinary committee would be an asset. And so, I'm, I support the, I support having a disciplinary committee, I support the policy. Tell me a time and a place, and I'll be here to vote for it.
Okay. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, now, I was going to bring up, but I'll just go ahead and echo Ms. Hines' office. I mean, this is, this is an issue that has been brought up on and off throughout the year. I mean, this board has talked about and has been concerned about the chronic absenteeism component of accreditation, which now, this, the cases even tonight is going to weigh in on, on that. I would propose that, I understand it has to go to the.
It should.
Oh, it should, and I, and I would agree with that. But I would also move that, in the next meeting, that we possibly put this on as an agenda item, so that we can go ahead and just get out the details, decide what we're going to do or not do.
Right.
And for it to be submitted to the, the policy, yeah, well, yeah, to the.
Policy committee, and then they recommend to the board. Ms. Williams?
If I recall correctly, we had a great deal of discussion.
We did.
On this.
We did.
And at that time, it was the majority of the board that said they did not want the smaller group hearing them, because everybody has a different perspective, and different board members bring, where you might want to suspend, like tonight, the situation we had.
Right.
So that was when it came up, and it was discussed, and I don't know whether it was straw vote or whatever, but it failed for the smaller one. So if you want to, and I know it was the 1, 2, 3, that you all wanted it, but we can put it back up there, but normal, the normal process is for it to come for the committee.
Mm-hmm.
So that we just, I mean, the committee first.
Right.
And we discuss, and then bring it back.
And I do recollect some of those discussions, Ms. Williams, but I also recollect, too, that we also discussed about a couple of different options. We talked about that, the committee of three. We had also talked about that of, if we had to meet instead of every other Thursday, if we had to throw in an additional Thursday or two, that was also brought up. I just, and I'll speak just for myself, I mean, looking at, at the length of time that many or some of these students.
But out for March.
Too much, it's March 15th.
Exactly. And, you know, and this isn't, this isn't the first time that something like this has happened. I think it's.
But I don't think that is an issue of us not being available. I think that's an issue of administration.
Well, oh, I.
I'm going to march to May.
Oh, I agree. I mean, I think there's, I think there's, yeah, well, I think there's a lot of room here to, to, that can make this more efficient.
Right.
But, but I do agree that, you know, sometimes when it does get done with the committee and so forth, and if we're not meeting for another week and a half on something, and their timelines, I think it's 10 days, depending, and then you hear it, and then it gets to us, and now you're looking at another 15 days, so even that is 25.
Right.
So, I just think it is definitely something that maybe should be put on, on an agenda item to discuss, to try to make this a more efficient thing.
Well, maybe it would be better if it goes to the policy committee, and then we could put the options in there.
Yes.
Because we did discuss that sometimes we may have to have special meetings.
That's right.
Right.
If it was going on too long, so those options, I mean, if the full board wants to continue to hear them. You know, they want to do the smaller group, but we need to put those options and bring them back to you.
I'm, you know what? I, I'm okay, I just want something efficient, because I think it's too long for a child to be out of school for, that could be up to 60 days or 90 days.
The division's getting, we're getting punished for it, because we're getting.
They're getting punished.
Yeah. And Ms. Atkinson, I think you.
I just want to say, I would like to remove my motion. And also, we did talk about this, and we said, "When it became too many, that we would call a special meeting." So I do remember us saying that. But I would like to remove my motion for approval.
Excluding BCEA?
Excluding BC.
Excluding.
Excluding BCEA.
Okay. All right, motion.
Second.
Ms. Atkinson?
Sir, did you remove your second?
Any further?
No, could you, are you keeping the, the motion with exclusion? Then it can stay.
Okay, got you.
But if you're going to remove, correct, if she's, if she's doing an emotion.
She's amending a motion to approve the policies with the exception of the special BCEA.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
So the second can stand?
Yes.
The second can stand.
Any further discussion? Hearing the, the more discussion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Yes, sir.
And with the, as you see, that some of the, some of those cases, they were out since March. That's going to happen when we, like, the April that we had, we had, one week, we had the work session, and then the following week, we had the board meeting. So, anything that took place within that time, that's already your 10-day window. Then we went on spring break. Then we come back, and they have to catch the next meeting, which is not until the 1st of May, so.
That's when we said we might need to put in a special.
That's right.
To catch some of those that have been out for that period of time.
That's correct.
Because that has a tendency to happen sometimes in, in December as well.
Yeah.
And in November, where VSBA falls.
And you have one meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, we can monitor those.
Okay.
Okay, Policy Committee, you're going to bring back.
Yeah.
All right, the next item is 3.9, which is discussion of the agenda for May 23rd. Dr. Bracy?
Yes. I think the fault that we have, are we adding?
I think, which one, which one are you looking at?
The next, the next meeting.
The next meeting.
23rd.
I mentioned the, the grant.
Oh, the Estes Grants. We don't, Mr. Falk says we don't need approval, but I do need to tell the board about them.
Yeah.
So we can just, we can.
That can be on the, we can do that at the next meeting, then, if you want to talk about it.
All right, you say we don't need approval, right?
I don't believe so.
Unless we, he figures out.
If we, if we find out that we need approval, then we'll, we'll add it, yeah.
And I want to be clear on budget and planning, that the grant, Mr. Falk, the budget and planning, the grant, the grant award, the grant that you're working on?
Yes, sir.
That's going to be part of your report, or we need to have a, we need to have a, it's not a contract placeholder, but we need an item on the agenda to approve. I hope that we can get this approved May 23rd, so the city council can vote on it in June. Okay.
We also need to put that rescinding, that, the rescinding motion on there as well. Once all of this, once the binder gets the blessing, then we'll put the rescinding notice on there as well.
So we need to rescind, and then we need to vote on the official resolution. I'd like, really like to do it in May, and get this over with, this has just been hanging over. All right.
Bring old person in.
Dr. Bracy, you want to go with the, the items you'd like to?
No, they said we don't.
It's the agenda for the 23rd.
Yeah, has anyone reviewed it? I don't go over it.
I reviewed it, and we're good.
I think it's fine. Okay. All right. Next item is consideration to utilize Sourcewell NJPA contract number 062415OUFC with the University Corporation.
Yes.
That, who is that, who is that under? Who's presenting that?
Well, this.
I mean, who's going to?
It's a roll call.
I know, it's a roll call.
Do you want your information on it?
Right.
Move for approval, second.
Okay. That's what you're getting at? That's what. All right.
Any discussion?
Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen.
Roll call vote, please.
Yeah. Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right. 311, Board Members' Reports. Anybody got any good reports?
When do we meet?
Does it meet again until the 29th? And I guess we schedule a meeting for policy?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll have a policy meeting, and I think we'll have a HR committee meeting.
30th, right? Dr. Winn, 30th. Mr. Barnes, have you had an opportunity to look at the corporate sponsorship?
We were discussing that.
Okay, so, me and Deandre have been having online meetings, and we just sent some information, idea we had, out to Dr. Kamarti. We saw that other graduations had vendors, so that's our first initiative that we want to launch, but we want to go over the details of that with Dr. Kamarti. So we should have an update by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other committee meetings?
We're in the process of scheduling the next curriculum and instruction meeting with.
I thought it was 30th.
May 30? I thought that was HR.
That's HR.
That's HR.
You're on both of them.
HR is May 30th, right?
Yes.
So with, with the advent of SOL season, to give curriculum and instruction some flexibility and do what they need to do during the day, we're looking at sometime around graduation, probably. Because then y'all go to summer hours, and everybody.
Right after.
Yeah.
And while we're talking about CNA, how is the, I mean, we're, we're in the throes of SOL.
We just started.
Just started.
Just started.
Yeah, we don't really have it.
So how is everything?
Everything's running.
Operationally.
Day two, day three now, so.
I just want to make sure that we're communicating with parents, because there is going to need to be a new education to the parents and to the media about SOL scores, now that we have the lessened amount of tests that students have to take, based on the new legislative pieces from the State Department. So it's not every child testing in every subject that they take that has an SOL. Now, with the new criteria for the standard and for the advance, there's a different, there's going to be different dynamics when it comes to testing. So I just want to make sure that when we talk as a board, and when we talk as a curriculum piece, that we're talking about how the, how the numbers are going to be presented, because comparing year after year in many subjects is not going to be the best practice because of the, the number and the students testing.
Okay. Ms. Atkinson?
And also, the MWBE committee met. I think you guys have received your invites to the session.
Right.
That's going to be a training for small businesses that's at the end of this month. Chairman Parent, I didn't see, I know we were supposed, supposed to be voting on the disparity study. Did you, did you receive any information on that? Okay, because I, I don't see it on this agenda or the following agenda, but I thought.
I have not, I have not.
Well, we can, I can get it, I can get it to, with you, and bring it to you. The committee has completed the background information, and can now bring it to the board for vote.
Next year, I guess.
Okay. The last thing is, all of you received through VSBA, the required, shall, board members shall complete the FOIA training and ethics training. And I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Meekins, and his law firm can provide that training for us, however, I think, excuse me, we're waiting for VSBA to give us more information.
My understanding of the email was they were providing a curriculum outline of what they wanted taught. We're very comfortable with giving you a FOIA, not quite as comfortable with the.
Ethics.
With the ethics side of it. Lawyer's ethics may be totally different than what your school board ethics may be. And so, once we see the outline, we can decide whether we appropriate it, or whether to let the SBA do that. But the point is, we're available to do that for you if it's more convenient, if it needs to put the approval of SBA.
So we're waiting on the SBA to get back with more guidelines, but, you know, it's got to be completed by the end of this year, so, you know, have things move forward real quickly. And it would be ideal if we could get it done during our retreat in August. Yeah. Yep, that's possible. Yes, Ms. Hines?
No, I was just making sure my brain was on your topic. Yes.
So soon we'll know, like you stated, the criteria, because if we've already gone through FOIA training, we could just probably submit something to VSBA, correct?
I don't know, I have that, all I saw was the same email burp that you saw. And so, I really don't know how they're planning to handle it. I'm sure they'll need some certification that you've done, that's all.
Be nice to see the curriculum, and I'm sure they're working on that. And once that, it would, what, the last email that I got was that they're working on that, and we would get more information, so, and they know the deadline's December. All right. All right, we've had a good meeting. Yes, sir, did you get the handle?
Yes, I don't have a committee report, but I do have, like, I just don't see it. Board member comments?
Well, we just, we just, nobody said anything, so I went on.
Well, that's fine. No, I, I just wanted to report that on April 25th, I was able to attend the Virginia Summit on Childhood Trauma and Resiliency, which was sponsored by the Voices for Virginia Children. And it was information overload, as you could probably imagine, but they had over 1,000 individuals in attendance. These were schoolteachers, mental health occupations of all sorts. The keynote speaker was Dr. Burke, Nadine Burke Harris, who is the first Secretary of Health and Welfare Secretary in California. And there was some, just some key data that I wanted to share that I thought was very startling. Nationally, over 12% of school-aged children has a score of four or more on ACEs. ACEs are adverse childhood experiences. Statistically, a student who has a score of four or more has 51 times more likely to have learning or behavior problems. Now, you just stop and you think about that. A score of four or more, 51 times more likely to have learning or behavior problems. And then they broke this down even into Virginia. 61% of the population has had one ACE score, while 14% of school-aged population has four or more ACEs. And so, you just look at just that alone. You know, and it just made me stop and think about here, our hometown. You know, we have great students, and many of them rise above their, their circumstances.